Officially four o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting of the City of Orlando Planning and zoning Commission for Tuesday, July 9th to order. And we have our quorum here in place. And motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, do not.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes from the meeting of June 11th, 2024. Assuming all commission members have read those. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Schoburg.
Second, Surfing.
Any further discussion? Corrections? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial report, listen to staff regarding the financial report.
This is Schrader with staff. This financial report is through May 31st, which would put us at ninety percent, ninety-one percent of the fiscal year. Looking down through the revenue side, fluctuates, some are under, some are over, with the total at fifty-six percent, which is a little surprisingly low. We'll take a little closer look at that, but sometimes certain revenues just don't come in as projected, so not too concerned about that, but it is a little low. And looking down on the expense side, again, some are above ninety-one and some are below, but the actual bottom line is right at ninety-one percent, so right where we're expected to be.
Any questions for staff on the financial report? If not, will a motion to approve the finance report?
So moved, do not.
Second, Lestico.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this point in time is the time for oral presentations. This is time we allow for people to speak on non-agenda items. Please step to the podium or speak online and state your name and your address and follow up with your comments or your statements. Is there anybody wishing to speak at this time for oral presentations not related to the agenda?
So I'm here today for the hobby farm.
Can you please, this is for non-agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm just for the hobby farm.
Okay. We'll get to yours in a minute.
We will get to yours, yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on non-agenda items right now at this point? Okay. Then we'll start with our new business. And the first one is a special permit request by Brittany Berendis for a special permit to allow for an urban animal hobby farm to allow for two goats, fourteen chickens in the R2-1 and 2-family district located at 1011 Longfellow Avenue. We'll have a staff report.
This is starting off with staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit for an urban animal hobby farm that will allow for two goats and fourteen chickens on a seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square foot lot located at ten eleven Longfellow Avenue. Their request not to anticipate to have a negative impact on the area because the lot's nearly one point seven five acres in size. Decided question is zoned R2-1 and 2-family residence districts, zone of such since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. And surrounding land uses in their zoning is to the north, south, east, and west is single-family homes zoned R2-1, 2-family residence district. The applicant's requesting a special permit to allow for an urban animal hobby farm within the R2-1 and 2-family residence district, raise up to fourteen chickens and two goats. Their request is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the area due to having close to one point seven five acres. Total lot size is seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. The density required for intermediate or large animals is goats is set at two animals for the first forty thousand feet and twenty thousand square feet for each additional animal. That would allow for a maximum of three goats on this property. The applicant's only requesting two goats. For small-sized animals such as chickens, the density requirement is set at two animals for the first ten thousand square feet and twenty-five hundred for each additional animal. The applicant's requesting have them, required to have a minimum fenced area of forty thousand square feet for the goats and plus forty thousand square feet for fourteen chickens. Got a total fenced area of eighty thousand square feet. The applicant's site plan is difficult to determine the total area of the fenced area, but it will be under eighty thousand square feet as the total lot size is seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. And the front yard and home would also be excluded. Also, the fence is required to be moved back ten feet off the property lines. That would decrease the area of the fenced yard. To approve the request submitted, a variance will need to be approved to have a ten-foot setback, to approve to have a ten-foot setback requirement for the fence and to have minimum fenced yard requirement of eighty thousand square feet to have two goats and fourteen chickens. But given the location of the proposed request and given the total lot size of almost one point seven five acres, a variance to this fenced area may be compatible with the area. Staff would recommend that the fence meet, staff would recommend that the fence meet the minimum ten-foot setback unless a petition of support to be less than ten feet assigned by property owners of the abutting properties. And the fence is proposed to be less than ten feet from. The application also requests approval for pigs, specifically pot-bellied pigs. However, swine, including pot-bellied pigs, are specifically prohibited inside the city of Waterloo limits except on a farm over forty acres. The prohibition, the prohibiting of swine is provided in the zoning ordinance and the city of Waterloo Code of Ordinance in Title V Police Regulations, Chapter 1 Animal Control. Therefore, any approval of a hobby farm could not include pigs. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Brittany Bernards for a special permit to allow for an animal, urban animal hobby farm with fourteen chickens, two goats, in the R2-1 and 2-family residence district located at ten eleven Longfellow Avenue be approved for defined reasons. Their request would not be anticipated to have an impact on the area due to the lot being one point seven five acres. Two, the fence will need to be set back ten feet on all sides to add separation to it from the neighbors or a variance approved with the following conditions. That the fence is set back ten feet on all sides unless a petition of support is signed by the property owners of abutting properties that the fence is proposed to be less than ten feet from and that swine, including pot-bellied pigs, shall be prohibited.
Questions for staff? So Commissioner Truss has a quick question for staff. So right now, the total lot size is approximately seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. That's without the ten-foot setback, correct?
That's the total lot size, including like the area where the house sits in the front yard.
Okay.
So the applicants did provide a site plan, but it's really difficult to assess on their, you know, if the fence is being shown on the property line on all sides or if it's showing a setback. And then difficult to calculate what that area of the fenced rear yard area for the animals would be. So we'll work with the applicant to get that information before the request goes on to the Board of Adjustment, but you know, based on the general size of it, even though it's going to be a little bit short for that number, staff is, you know, feels it's not going to be out of character with the areas, recommending approval. If the fence is going to be less than that ten foot, we're just recommending, that would take a variance and we're just recommending that that would only be allowed if that abutting property owner, that the fence would be less than ten feet from signs of petition.
Okay, so what you're saying, what staff is saying is, is that if, if the ten-foot variance to move the fence to the outer perimeter is, is allowed, then the, even though the square footage is slightly less than the requirement, that staff is okay or recommending, given the, given the conditions and the situation in the, in the neighborhood, that the number requested of animals would be, would be appropriate?
Correct. It's a, it's a large lot and, and there's, it's probably larger than most of the other ones right around it, but the other ones are pretty good sized as well.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Schoburg. Have we had the square footage listed prior in these? We've had a few urban animal hobby farms in the last, I would say, six months. The square footage is seem a lot larger than what I remember them mean.
This is Schrader with staff, so I believe this is only the second one that's involved the larger intermediate-sized animals. So most of them have all been the small animals, mainly chickens, which is the, you know, ten thousand square feet to start for, and that gets you the first two, and then the two thousand five hundred square feet per. So it's a lot smaller. As soon as you get into that intermediate and start needing the twenty thousand per, then that adds up real fast. And I think there's been some discussion, even just for the small animals, whether or not it's, you know, overly restrictive and we're going to kind of take a look at that, but that hasn't been done yet.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? At this time, if there's anybody present that would like to speak on behalf of this request, either online or in chambers, please state your name and your address.
Brittany Berendis, ten eleven Longfellow Avenue.
Can you speak in the speaker microphone so that they can hear you? Thank you.
Brittany Berendis, ten eleven Longfellow Avenue. And I just want to come up here and kind of tell everybody why I want to do this. We wish to propose the development of a hobby farm that would allow us to provide our family with healthy food while also teaching our son important lessons about responsibility and sustainability. We do plan to include chickens and goats to fulfill our needs for meat and eggs and also milk for the goats as well as to keep, maintain up on the property. It's a big property. This initiative would promote a healthier lifestyle but also serve as a valuable learning experience for our child. So just wanted to kind of put that in there, why we want to do it.
Appreciate any, appreciate your comments. Thank you. Any questions from commission members or comments? Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers or online that wishes to speak on behalf of this request? Okay. If not, then, anyone who want to make a motion regarding this request?
Yes, Commissioner Lestico. I will make a motion that the request by Brittany Berendis for a special permit to allow for an urban animal hobby farm with fourteen chickens and two goats in the R2-1 and 2-family residence district located at ten eleven Longfellow Avenue be approved with the following condition, that the fence is set back ten feet on all sides unless a petition of support is signed by the property owner of any abutting property that the fence is proposed to be less than ten feet from and that swine, including pot-bellied pigs, shall be prohibited.
Second, Commissioner Surfing.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Lestico. I've seen that there's no opposition out there. Were, were any neighbors notified of this?
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, property owners within two hundred and fifty feet were sent a notice. We did get a call with some initial concerns from the property owner to the west, but they didn't subsequently call back and noted that they are not opposed.
Okay. Yeah. I'll just rely on staff and neighbors. It looked like there was someone out there.
Did you hear your hand up, ma'am?
Yes.
Come to the podium and state your name and address if you have something to ask her.
My name is Julie Tansey. I live at two sixteen Normandy, and I've lived there for forty-one years. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood and everybody honors their neighbors and it's a nice, quiet area, a good place to live. And I'm wondering if this isn't going to open an ugly door to a lot of noise and confusion and chasing animals through the neighborhood because if it starts here, isn't somebody else going to want a goat? Goats stink like crazy. If you've ever seen one, they stink. And there's a lot of things that you don't think about. I ordinarily don't care what anybody does on their own property, but you know, as long as it doesn't bother their neighbors and make a big fuss and stink and noise. And that's my major objection to it, I guess.
I do know that there's been quite a, quite a bit of discussion on past applications on these types of, and there's been some additional effort put in by the staff on trying to develop the ordinance regarding hobby farms and types of animals. I don't, I'm not an expert on this. The staff is probably more heavily involved than, than us as commission members, but we're, you know, we're here to basically interpret and enforce the, the ordinances that the commission has developed, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know that roosters aren't allowed. I believe that's one of the, one of the requirements of the hobby farm, you can't have roosters, and those are the ones that are typically making the morning noise. I'm presuming that the square footage requirements are pertaining to approximate, to noise and density of animals and the amount of area that they have versus the amount of waste you might have. So I'm presuming that a lot of these areas, area of, of land and number of animal per square footage is, been developed based on those concerns.
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, it has. And when Waterloo was passing the urban animal hobby farm restrictions, there was a good bit of discussion, debate, and maybe to some level controversy over that with some pushing to be more open to allowing hobby farms and not being so restrictive at it, to others saying, you know, farm animals don't belong in the city limits at all. And so kind of the compromise was this system that set it up as a special permit so neighbors would get notice and density requirements that were on the more restrictive side with the potential for granting exceptions in individual cases if deemed appropriate.
I would also add that because the requirement is eighty thousand feet, the, the animals don't utilize the land in the same way. So I think having a little bit less land might more or less be okay in this situation, I think.
I just don't want to get something really ugly started in my neighborhood. Period.
May I ask, are you right beside that property line or how close are you?
Well, if you see the... I live right behind them and one over. Okay. And my property faces Normandy, Normandy Street. But there's no fences between there and my property at all.
Could fencing be a, this is, this Eric Do Not.
Could fencing be a condition?
They have a condition around the animals.
It is, it's part of the requirement. Yeah, fencing is a requirement. That's part of, that's part of the request is that the approval request is contingent upon a fence being placed within that square footage requirement.
Yeah, the urban animal hobby farm.
It's going to snowball into something quite different. I don't trust, trust that it won't either. Once somebody sees somebody get by with something, hey, what an idea, you know?
They still have to come through and they're in violation of the ordinance. And if there's more animals.
But you already have an existent, existing ordinance, do you not?
Yes.
Correct. So if there's animals on a property that should not be on a property, that's in violation of ordinance. If there's more animals or different types of animals than what was approved to be on that property, that's in violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
This applicant filed and followed all the rules and, and that's always a good way to start. And when they start out by following the rules and the processes, generally they tend to continue following the rules. And as a commissioner, a lot of times when I think about when somebody wants to do something, I think about, is that something that I would want next door to my home? And in this situation, I, I think I'd give them a fair shot.
What if it doesn't?
What if it doesn't, what, ma'am?
What if it becomes a problem? What if it becomes noisy and?
Then that's something that gets.
Because I didn't, I didn't move here to live on a farm.
As a, as a community, Waterloo approved the ordinances and put ordinances in place. And if, if there's a concern in violation of an ordinance, then that needs to be raised with the city officials. And then that will then be addressed through the city officials in violation of an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Eric, does, how tall does the fence have to be and does it say it as a block view or, does it specify in the ordinance?
This is Schrader with staff. I, let me look real quick. It just specifies that it has to be fenced, so I don't think there's a specification on height or that it.
Type.
Or, or type, that it be solid. I think that was done because of, that would be pretty restrictive and, you know, especially on a.
Larger.
On a larger property like this to require a solid fence all the way around it, although that certainly would be the purview of, you know, the approving entity to look at requiring a solid fence. But otherwise, no, it does not specify either a height or type. There is wording about having the fence, about sanitary conditions, keeping clean, dry, odor-free, and then the enforcement of that would fall upon our department or the code enforcement department.
I grew up on the farm and you'd have to clip their wings a bit so they can't fly up and over or anything, you know? So that'd be the animal farmer and to take care of that.
Okay, if they're not.
So that's not a nuisance.
I would presume if they become a nuisance and they are flying over the fence, then that's in violation of the ordinance again.
Yeah, the specific wording is the confined area must be fenced with approved material for a residential fence, but residential fence.
Can be changed.
Can include chain link or things of that nature and in such way as to prohibit escape and be properly maintained. So it's, you know.
So it doesn't say number of feet or anything?
Correct. It does not.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? Okay. Call for a vote. You can vote yes or vote no. All's in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All's opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request by Robson Homes Incorporated for the preliminary plat of Phase Three Prairie Meadow Estates addition, a five-lot residential subdivision in the R3 multiple residence district located east of Omaha Avenue. We'll have, hear from the staff report.
This is Schneider with staff. The applicant is requesting to plat the property in question for the purpose of creating a five-lot residential subdivision for duplexes and one three-plex located east of Omaha Avenue. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or land use as the surrounding area is primarily twin homes and single-family homes with some four-plexes. It would appear that the preliminary plat request would not have a negative impact upon vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. Sidewalks are proposed along all street frontages in the preliminary plat. The area is currently zoned R3 multiple residence district and has been zoned as such since it was rezoned from A1 agricultural district on October 6th, nineteen eighty. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows. To the north is commercial development zoned S1 shopping center district. To the south is vacant land and Cedar Valley Lawn Care zoned A1 agricultural district. To the east is vacant land zoned R3 multiple residence district. And to the west is residential development zoned R3 RP planned residence district. The applicant will need a, will need to get a drainage plan approved through the engineering department. The preliminary plat shows an eight-inch sanitary sewer line located within all proposed streets. An eight-inch water line is proposed to be located along the southerly side of what is currently referred to as Street A and along the easterly side of Grindstone Circle and Morning Dove Drive. There are no easements currently shown for the development. The development is proposing twenty-three duplexes and one triplex for a total of forty-nine units. The Phase Three Prairie Meadow Estates addition will be located to the east of Prairie Meadow Estates addition. Prairie Meadow Estates addition final plat was approved by city council on April 6th, two thousand and fifteen, and homes have been constructed since then. The parcel is four hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred square feet, approximately ten acres. Including right-of-way, there will be approximately eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet of area per unit. This exceeds the minimum requirement of three thousand six hundred square feet for two-family dwellings and twenty-five hundred square feet for multifamily dwellings in the R3 multiple residence district. The duplexes will be able to meet the minimum lot width requirement of seventy feet and the minimum setback requirements if they are split into separate lots someday. The smaller duplex will be fifty feet wide and be located ten feet from another larger duplex. And there is a fifteen-foot side setback shown. The larger duplex will be seventy-six feet wide and will be ten feet from other duplexes. The duplexes and three-plexes will stand character and size with the existing residential properties in the area. The front yard setback for the three-plex needs to change to forty feet or the applicant will need to submit a variance request to allow for a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. The zoning ordinance requires a, in section ten twenty-five-two off-street parking area, required that multifamily road dwellings with individual driveways providing parking spaces in the required front yard area and designated, and designed to permit the entrance or exit by backward movement of vehicles onto or off of a public street shall be permitted when the portion of said multifamily road dwelling that abuts the end of the driveway is set back at least forty feet from the public street that driveways connect to. At the technical review committee, Knutson noted Wayne Castle had comments on the request and had sent them to the planning department for them to be added. To the staff report, Schrader questioned if the driveways to the triplex will meet the requirements and instructed Schneider to review the ordinance for the requirements. These comments have been addressed and added to the staff report. The subdivision ordinance requires that preliminary plat submissions include such criteria as boundaries of property, proposed streets, easements, and widths of right-of-way contours and utility locations. The plat includes some of these items except the items listed below are missing. For example, lot numbers, dimensions, curved out of lot areas, utility and drainage easements, adjacent subdivision names, property descriptions, and property owner names, name of the proposed street. The street is currently referred to as Street A. Proposed public utility services such as water, sump, and sanitary sewer. Proposed private utility mains such as gas, electric, and telecom. Data for proposed streets such as street width, thickness, et cetera. The name of the subdivision needs to be revised to Prairie Meadow Estates First Edition. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Robson Homes and Company for the preliminary plat of Phase Three Prairie Meadow Estates addition, a five-lot residential subdivision in the R3 multiple residence district located east of Omaha Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The plat would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area or have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. negative impact on traffic conditions in the area, and the plat will create an additional, additional housing in the primary growth area and subject to the following condition, that the preliminary plat be updated prior to it being submitted to City Council.
Questions for staff?
Yes, this is Do Not. Do we have anything from the applicant that was sent to staff that would, um, answer any questions or concerns about, um, the comments from Wayne Castle, or if, um, or options or accessibility for who would live in the development?
This is Schrader with staff. The, who, the last part, who would live in the development, we don't have any information on that, but for the, um, items that are missing or, um, um, not currently listed correctly on the plat, yeah, yes, that, that list has been provided to them, and they are working on getting those corrections made, so they don't, they anticipate being able to have everything fixed before we would send it to council.
And, uh, Wayne Castle's comments or concerns were considered resolved?
They, I mean, they, they are resolving them and don't anticipate any issues meeting them.
So, they're either adjusting the, the setback to forty feet, or they're requesting a variance?
I'm assuming, well, that one wasn't, uh, Wayne Castle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was one I noted, but.
Okay.
I'm guessing they'll probably request the variance. Um, it may be just as easy for them to push it back to the forty feet, it'll be a longer driveway, you know, for them, a little more expense, but.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on the report, on the request?
Just one, this is minor, but on the staff recommendation, is it important in the motion, um, that this be referred to as Prairie Meadow Estates First Edition? We just don't have First Edition in the, we just need to reference this First Edition.
Yeah, I would say if, if there's a motion made that we, I know we're not, we're getting beyond that to that point right now, but, um, I think you probably want to refer to items one through seven, plus that name change.
Okay.
As part of the, as part of the motion.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Um, any other questions for staff? Okay. Um, is there anyone present that wants to speak on behalf of this request, either online or in person? State your name and your address.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, this is Jason Bleden with Snyder and Associates. Uh, our address is twenty-seven twenty-seven Southwest Snyder Boulevard in Aitney. Here on behalf of Robson Homes as the developer, um, to touch base on the comments that were brought up, we are still discussing with the owner whether they go with the variance request or, or shift the unit back for the threeplex. We are still determining that. Um, we do intend to address all of Wayne's comments and don't see any concerns with those, and we'll get, uh, those addressed and over to staff for their approval.
Any questions for the consultant for the developer?
Yes, this is, uh, Commissioner Do Not. My, my question from earlier was about who would be able to live there, um, and if there were going to be options or, uh, accessible units for people with disabilities?
Uh, I'll have to check with, uh, Robson Homes on that. I do know that they intend to be very similar to the units that were built to the west.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? The consults, the developer's consultant? Thank you. Uh, any, doesn't appear to be anyone in the chambers, there's probably no one else online, speak up now if you wish to make any additional comments. Um, if not, entertain a motion.
Doesn't matter to me. Whatever you have on the page, do it.
Well, I'll make a request that the, uh, I'll make a motion that the request by Robson Homes for the preliminary plat of Phase Three Prairie Meadows First Edition of a five-lot residential subdivision in the R three multiple residence district located east of Omaha Avenue be approved with the following condition. One, the preliminary plat be updated prior to it being submitted to council, as well as the lot numbers, dimensions, and curved data, lot areas are included, the utility and drainage easements are included, adjacent subdivision names, property descriptions, and property owner names included, name of the proposed street included, the proposed public utility services such as water, sump pump, and sanitary sewer be included, the proposed private utility mains such as gas, electric, and telecom be included, and that the data for proposed streets, street width, thicknesses, et cetera, be included.
And change it to Prairie Meadows Estate First Edition.
And change the subdivision name to read Prairie Meadows First Edition.
Second, Do Not.
Prairie Meadows Estates First Edition.
Second, Do Not. Any further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, discussion. Any other items to be discussed with the commission?
Did we want to, uh, have a preliminary discussion about item C that was in the tech notes?
It says that it's not for, it says it's not for P and Z tonight.
Yeah, this is, this is Schrader with staff. I mean, it was pulled off the agenda because the applicant's not ready, and, um, they're hopeful that it'll be back on this next month, but there, um, there's some issues with, um, access and drainage runoff, uh, and some limitations on how they can do that, so they're working through those. So, there's a possibility it won't even be ready for this next month, but they're still shooting for that, so hopefully it'll be back on next month.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other items to discuss? Okay. Um, motion to adjourn.
So moved, Schoburg.
Second, Listico.
Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.